Yes, everybody, this is the Sciop Township Board of Trustees meeting. We're going to get started in just a couple of minutes. All right, the mics are live here. We have Alec, Kathy, and Jackie joining remotely. Is that done here?
No, she called me just a bit.
Recording in progress.
I would like to call this meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees to order at 7:05. We are holding this meeting in person, but we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order, and this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. The Board has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls a roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at Township Hall need only indicate that they are present. If you are participating remotely, please state so and indicate your location by the municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer? Absent. Flintoff? Present. Corto?
Present, Sciop Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Jerome?
Present, Sciop Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Present, Sciop Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel? Absent. We have Quorme.
Great. The next item is adoption of the agenda. I propose the following amendments to the agenda. Remove unfinished business H4 compensation commission nominations. Remove unfinished business H5 discussion-only ordinance amendments to Chapter 6, Amusements and Entertainments, Article 2, Fireworks Regulations. Remove new business items I1, I2, I3, and I4 related to the Deputy Treasurer, Budget Director, and Accounting Assistant. Add unfinished business land preservation application 2020-03. The reasons for these agenda changes are the compensation commission nominations merit deliberation and action by the full board if possible, and we have two members absent this evening. The ordinance amendments are not urgent and can wait until another meeting. The Deputy Treasurer-related items require the participation of the Treasurer, and she is not able to attend this evening due to a last-minute family emergency. And the addition of the unfinished business land preservation application item has to do with a closed-session meeting that we held yesterday. Unless there are other modifications to the agenda, I move to adopt the agenda as modified.
To point.
Report by Corto. Clerk Flintoff?
I would like to unfortunately remove payment of the bills from the agenda. AP was unable to be prepared in time to have the claims presented, and so we will have to have those presented at the next meeting.
So that's item G1, and it's to remove completely from the agenda?
Correct, move completely from the agenda. And I would comment, H5 ordinance amendments to Chapter 6 is discussion-only. Will take a few minutes. This was removed from the agenda last time, so this will be the third meeting in the row that this would be removed. It's a few minutes, part of our reconsification process, and something I'd suggest we keep moving forward.
Well, I treat G1, the removal of G1, as an unfortunate but friendly amendment, but would like to keep the removal of item H5. Are there any other comments before we call the roll? In that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Agenda adopted.
The next item is communications to the Board of Trustees.
Yes, I rolled up the packet. You have all of them, about 12 communications from the public.
And that brings us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matters under the purview of the Board of Trustees. If you are participating remotely, I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. If you are participating in person, you may approach the table when it is your turn. Trustee Jerome has agreed to serve as timekeeper and will announce when there is 30 seconds remaining, and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are finished. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees at this time. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers, and please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. Public comments are not an opportunity for back-and-forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
Person first?
Sure. If you're here in person and would like to comment, please come up to the table. Welcome, Diane.
Well, I, good evening. I was going to be commenting on things that you took off the agenda, and that were the unfinished, I mean, the new business of the Budget Director, Accounting Assistant, et cetera. I just want to let people know, I won't, I will be commenting in the next meeting where this comes up, but I want people to know that the Board of Trustees and the residents that I did not write these job descriptions for either the Budget Director and Accounting Assistant, and there is some archaic language in those descriptions such as operates a computer terminal, 20th-century language. And the description for the Accounting Assistant needs to state that it is a non-benefit-eligible position, because any part-time positions in the township, according to your staff handbook, do not give benefits to part-time employees unless they are, if, the only thing would be prorated paid time off. Just a reminder, you know, that, you know, well, not a reminder, but I do wholeheartedly support Sandy Egler moving into the Deputy Treasurer slash Budget Director position. So my other comments in regards will wait until the next time we meet. I was, another subject was, I was really appalled, and I actually watched it twice, and family members watched it as well when I was in Denver, the Budget and Finance Meeting. Really? Why does the supervisor control the agenda for a meeting for a group that he is not even a member of? Now, I realized that when the supervisor's job description was approved on August 17th, that was part of the job description, that he would be in charge of the agendas and be the moderator for all committee meetings. So does this mean that the supervisor will go to TAP, Sustainability Meetings, Parks and Pathways, et cetera? Or is it only meetings that Clerk Flintoff is part of? All the clerk wanted to do at that meeting was add some items for discussion. Is it time for the clerk to hold presentations just so the residents can hear her ideas? We want to hear her ideas.
30 seconds.
Okay. Sometimes I feel that Clerk Jessica is getting so discouraged that she will resign. Is that your plan? Well, the residents will not let her resign. In my 40 years of work experience, I have never seen such a disregard for colleagues. It is a shame. You could have all worked together and made this township great, but no, time and money are being wasted. No wonder the supervisor needed to double his salary. At least 20 hours per week are spent conniving to thwart every single idea Clerk Jessica has. Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Please come up. Don't have to wait for me.
Caroline Altmar, 3709 West Street, Sciop Township resident. I just have a couple of comments to make. I have observed many instances of clashing discussions of the Board between each other and between the Board and the residents. This is extremely troubling. Frankly, the responses by Mr. Hathaway to myself and others feel patronizing. I get no sense of being truly heard, and that you, Mr. Hathaway, do not understand or seem to care how this looks to the residents, how it feels to essentially be patted on the head and asked to move along. You should care about how you are perceived in the township. It is not a small group of crazies as characterized by Erwin Martin, and really, how did that sound to the residents? We are an ever-growing segment of the population. Perhaps you don't really know how big it is. Just because you're not vocal here does not mean that it isn't substantial. I was once part of that silent majority, and now I'm a part of an ever-growing vocal group. Then, the painful and internal dysfunction. Hold the cow. The way the clerk and trustee Noel are spoken to by Mr. Hathaway, Mr. Jerome, Ms. Corto, Ms. Vogel, and Ms. Palmer is disgraceful. The continual five-to-two divide has become a very deep threat, making true forward progress difficult at best and many times impossible. I've said it before, and I will say it again, the Board needs help, outside help, to learn to work together. Bulldozing your way through five-to-two vote at one after another over objections by trustees and residents is no way to run a township. In closing, I again remind all of you of the growing number of learned, educated, smart residents that are digging deep, growing in numbers, and sharing information. We talk, we gather resources, and we vote. Thank you. Thank you, Caroline.
Hi, I'm Leanne Phillips-Kinopan. I live near Delhite Metro Park. It's been a revealing last two weeks for our community. Through FOIA requests, we learned that our former supervisor, Jack Knowles, has been acting as a Sciop Township representative, consulting with external agencies, advocating for the use of eminent domain, and working covertly with select Board members. Private citizens may not conduct themselves as government officials. And we had all hoped that the Board had learned this lesson with Mr. Luke Hitter and the SAD process. But this behind-the-scenes manipulation has got to end now, and residents really expect that the scope of Noel's involvement will be fully investigated and that this will be corrected immediately. What's even more upsetting to me tonight is the intimidating and self-righteous behavior that the supervisor displayed at the last Budget Committee meeting, where he hijacked a meeting that was not his to lead. And I really hope everyone takes this to heart. I couldn't believe, I looked at the video recording of that meeting tonight, and it has had 532 people view it. The, in comparison, the prior Budget Committee meeting had six people view it. And so what Caroline said, your out-of-order behaviors supervisor are making a huge impression on this community. It cannot be understated. What occurred was abhorrent. You had a smile on your face and a clear plan of attack to sabotage the clerk. And you had clearly prepared the treasurer to, you had coached her clearly to participate in that. And I just want to say to all of the Board members who voted for this August 18th resolution, I want to ask our Treasurer, Trustees Jerome, Corto, and Vogel, is this what you all intended with your resolution on August 17th? Because I certainly hope that you do not approve of the bullying and oppressive behaviors that are carried out in our township, because how would you feel if this happened to you in your workplace? How would you feel if one of your child?
30 seconds.
Is your spouse, or, I'm gonna finish, I'd like to finish, because, intended or not, these behaviors are now being perpetrated in your name, and they are a part of the permanent legacy of the supervisor on video. But they're now going to be a part of your legacy if you don't do something about this. So in closing, if you did not intend to give the supervisor absolute power, then find a way to right the wrong immediately, and if you, if you, if you continue with group think, if you do nothing, you are as responsible as he is, and it's, it's just an embarrassment. And I sincerely hope you find a way to make this right with the clerk and, and with, with the community, because you've harmed all of us, and, and it's not, it's, it's intolerable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne.
Who's next?
Hello, Board. My name is Timothy Boggs. I own the building and the property at 7235 Jackson Road. I received a letter a few weeks back talking about a rezoning of approximately 89.74 acres. I don't have a copy of the agenda, so I don't, is that on the agenda for tonight, or was that removed? I know I'm asking a question, but...
What's the address again?
Well, it's a rezoning of approximately 89.74 acres next to the Tractor Supply.
That is on the agenda, I believe.
Okay. So my, my concern is I own the building next door to Tractor Supply. The back of my property that I own backs up to this area that's going to be rezoned as PUD. And I'm just curious, what is going to be built there? What is the plan for it? I haven't seen any plans. I noticed that it says I can come in, you know, between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. Is there plans on record for me to see? I'd like to just have a little bit more idea of what is going to go in that place, so I know it's going to go along the backside of my property. You know, is there going to be walls built? Is there, I have no idea yet, so I'd like to see what is going to be going in that area. And I don't know if that is in discussion for tonight or not.
It is. It's, we have a public hearing, and then we will have an item on the agenda for that.
Is there, is there plans of you? Are you going to be showing any plans?
There are plans, there are some plans in the agenda meeting packet for this evening. Those are available online.
Okay. All right. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And also, the chief is kind enough to make copies of the agenda, and one copy of the packet, he'll be bringing it in, and so you can grab it from him when he walks in.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Who else would like to address the Board this evening, who's here in person? No other, no other people who would like to address the Board at this time in person here in the meeting? Are there members of the public who would like to address the Board remotely?
Yes, we have 53 people in attendance on Zoom. First up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Peter Davis. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township. I have been driven to share my comments and opinion tonight by the outrageous behavior I have witnessed over the past few weeks. I have been civil in the past, but tonight I will be a little more direct in an attempt to break through to the deaf ears of our elected officials. We saw the latest demonstration of the supervisor's true nature during the BNF Committee meeting last week. I highly suggest the rest of the Board of Trustees watch this meeting. It is the most recent performance in his masterclass about ambush, sabotage, and dirty tricks. It also explains why the supervisor has been willing to block the clerk from being able to do her job for the past several months. The clerk was interested in bringing attention to and discussing solutions for the staffing shortage in the Finance Department. The supervisor was interested in demanding financial reports with one hand while denying the resources to produce those reports with the other. Tonight's agenda highlights his reasons for doing so. He needed to block the clerk from solving the problem until he could change the reporting structure of the financial team. Tonight, the Board of Trustees will appoint a new Deputy Treasurer. On paper, that is a great addition to the foundation of the township's government, except for one glaringly obvious flaw. Instead of adding a position to the finance team's strength, you have merely moved one person out of the Finance Department and into the position of Deputy Treasurer, reporting to the Treasurer. Okay, great. You've moved a decades-long expert from one position to another. This does nothing to lessen the pressure on the long-understaffed Finance Department. You have not hired an additional person. You have not solved the problem. A strong argument could be made that you have made the problem worse. Fair enough. You've moved the Finance Manager to the Deputy Treasurer position. When are you going to hire a new Finance Manager? When are you going to hire enough staff with enough capability to produce the reports you are continuing, you are currently paying an outside contractor $150 an hour for? When are you going to give the Finance Department the tools and capabilities to produce the reports you so loudly demand? So you can see why the supervisor had to cost the township potentially tens of thousands of dollars through delaying the fire station project, the Utilities Department, and the Finance Department.
30 seconds.
Changing the reporting structure and gaslight residents claiming to be adding staff to strengthen the team at Township Hall. I believe it is because he has no concept of what leadership means that he doesn't realize all of these efforts actually damage the township government by creating a hostile work environment and cost taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars while he works hard to sabotage the clerk. Speaking of lack of leadership skills, another item on tonight's agenda is the Compensation Commission. Two weeks ago, the supervisor put forward a list of five nominations to the Compensation. On that list, the wife of the previous supervisor, on that list is the wife of the previous supervisor. That previous supervisor has proven himself to be a secret member of the TAP Committee since David Kennedy resigned earlier this year. Before he realized residents were recording the committee meetings, he was perfectly comfortable appearing on camera and fully participating during those meetings. Since then, he has vanished from camera and participates behind closed doors.
Mr. Pattinson, your time is up. Your, your time is up.
That show as of October 13th, he is participating fully in TAP discussions.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Peter Davis. Peter?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Peter. Yes, hi Peter.
Hi. I live at 3225 North Wagner Road, CYO Township. I want to address a very narrow issue tonight. There are lots of issues that I would like to address, but I want to begin by saying I do think that you should go back to a five-minute public comment session. Three minutes is not enough. But the issue I want to address concerns the Compensation Commission. I'm looking at Will Hathaway's agenda item for possible action, which he talks about the background for the Compensation Commission. And he states that the specifics of the Compensation Commission are set by Michigan Statute, which is true. The statute is Michigan compiled laws 41.95. And I don't know whether Jim Fink has tuned in tonight. I assume that he is. My friend Jim has, I believe, made some comment by email that employees of the University of Michigan and Eastern Michigan University cannot serve on the Compensation Commission. And I'm now going down to the third paragraph of Will's Compensation Commission memo, where he states that the statute sets specific qualifications for appointees. And he says, for example, they must be residents or registered voters of the township. And he goes on to say they may not be employed by serving as an officer of any government body or married to someone who is employed by or serving as an officer of any government. Now, that's just not correct. The statute doesn't say that. The statute says is that an officer... I'm reading from 41.95. An officer or employee of a government agency or unit or a member of the immediate family of an officer or employee shall not be appointed to the Commission. A government agency or unit, not the same thing as any government body, as Mr. Hathaway has put in his memo. A government agency or unit does not include the University of Michigan. It does not include Eastern Michigan University. They're different entities, but the University of Michigan is a constitutional entity. A self-functioning constitutional entity. I served as the Chief Trial Counsel for the University of Michigan for 20 years, from 1978 to 1998. And I dealt with that issue frequently. The University of Michigan is...
Thirty seconds.
The university is independent of any other agency. And its employees are not members working for an agency or a unit of a government. They're totally independent of that. And I think that they can serve. I have a lot more to say, but your three-minute time limit is simply inadequate. You need to go back to five minutes. Thank you.
Thanks Peter. Next up is Harvey Summers, followed by Sandra Egler. Harvey?
Harvey Summers, 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. The board regularly seems to remove items from agendas. Makes me wonder if the majority of the board is just not prepared as it should be. Although the last speaker seemed to indicate... Second last speaker, this is all part of a plan. All of that makes me very sad. But the question I really want to ask tonight, the supervisor's behavior, the budget meeting in particular, but in general, has received significant and, I believe, justified criticism tonight and recently. What confuses me is how the other trustees support so many positions that residents see to be to the detriment of our community. Are the other trustees not listening to the residents who elected them? Do they not have independent thoughts of their own? Thank you.
Thank you Harvey. Next up is Sandy Egler. And it'll be Sandy Egler, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Sandy?
Good evening.
Hi Sandy.
Hello. My name is Sandy Egler, and I spent the last 20 years as the township's Chief Financial Officer. I missed the first few minutes of the meeting, so I'm unsure what was removed, but I feel compelled to speak and urge the board to pass the changes proposed for the accounting staff. I have made no secret that I am interested in helping put together a new structure for the accounting staff. I spoke in depth with Jim Murdy before his retirement about the items he helped the Treasurer with. He produced the tax rule and did all of the administration for all of the special assessments, work that would be shifted to me if you passed these resolutions. Given that many more SADs have been created by the board in recent months, there is a great deal more work than previously existed. With this new work, along with budgets, audit, and bond maintenance, there is ample work to keep me busy. We still have the need for additional help, mostly with cash receipts. I believe hiring a new person initially part-time is a good start and will help us gauge exactly how much help we actually need. Rehiring Nancy Colasante is a great way to assess our needs, as she will only work the number of hours needed at any given time to get the work done. Plus, given her previous experience and familiarity with our software, she can jump in and become effective, given a little refresher course. I also believe we will find we still need more help to reduce our reliance on outside consultants. I really believe it would benefit the clerk and remaining finance staff to hire a similar part-time person to help with accounts payable and determining their actual ongoing needs. What many may not realize is that a lot of the work I have been responsible for over the last 30 years as the township's Chief Financial Officer are tasks that fall under the Treasurer's responsibilities. I do not believe the township will need to hire a finance director, because what is needed is what we finally call...
Thirty seconds.
Do not need more expensive managers. The Treasurer needs a skilled, trained accountant to assist her. Making this switch will give both the clerk and the Treasurer a skilled, trained accountant. Thank you.
Thank you Sandy. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Pat Stein. Jonathan? Oh, I'm sorry. Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Pat Stein.
Thank you.
Hi Jonathan.
Hi Jessica. Having borne witness to the events of the last Budget Committee meeting that everyone's talking about, I want to apologize to you publicly for the way you were treated in that meeting. Behavior, as we noted, is disgusting. Video was there to see, and obviously people are interested in it, given the number of views in just a few short days. The ongoing behavior of the supervisor, obviously I've commented on it before. What I would say would echo everything that has been said so far. And it wouldn't be so surprised, I've never been accused of being part of the silent minority. What I will say is that after a couple of years of showing up to these meetings and watching the proceedings over and over again, these folks, the Jack Knowles and the Will Hathaways and the folks who are following Lackey's in the Group of Five, they are not interested in me or I, or what we have to say. What they're interested in is their own interests. That's why they are where they are. And so the only way we as citizens can take action against this blatant disregard for the very vocal majority of the population is to take back the seats in the next election. But until that time, we all need to show up. We all need to bear witness to the misogyny and the terrible behavior of our supervisor and willing acceptance and passive acceptance of the rest of the Group of Five. Your limiting of comments to three minutes is just another sign of the contempt that you hold for your constituents. The fact that it was traditionally five and you lowered it to three needs to be brought out every day in these conversations, as well as the power that you think you granted yourself back in August to disrupt and impact others who are trying to do their job like our clerk. It's a disgusting display, but as concerned citizens, we need to attend and we need to show up and we need to bear witness to this, because we will have enough people in the next election. Because the last one was really close. We will have enough people in the next election.
Thirty seconds.
And help them figure out a way of getting what they want in life, the way we do, by working for it, by being good citizens and kind to each other, instead of the blatant disregard for residents and... Thank you for your time.
Thank you Jonathan. Next up is Pat Stein, followed by Jillian Carey. Pat? Pat Stein? Oh, I'm sorry, Pat. Let me... Let me... Sorry, there's a lot of people on. Pat Stein, followed by Jillian Carey. Pat?
Good evening.
Hi Pat.
I'm also going to comment on the outrageous behavior by our supervisor at the recent Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Two items regarding Clerk Flintoff's need for assistance in the Finance Department have been pulled from the Board of Trustees' agenda time after time by Supervisor Hathaway. For months now, CYO's supervisor has been denying CYO's clerk the tools she needs to successfully do her job. At this most recent BNF meeting, he even attempted to take the meeting over from the Chair, Clerk Flintoff, and revise her own agenda to remove the same two items. And it wasn't just the fact that he pulled such a questionable stunt, it was the hostile way in which he did. Snickering, grinning, unpleasant way to conduct herself, and not for the first time. So I ask you, where is this hostility coming from Supervisor Hathaway? What is it about Clerk Flintoff that leaves you so out of control that you cannot show her one ounce of stability? Has this hostility been growing from the seeds our previous supervisor, Jack Knowles, planted to poison our newest board members against our clerk? Yes, we know of those poisonous seeds. We learned of them from one of many FOIA documents. At some point, some of us may have been asked if we were Team Will or Team Jessica. I like David Reed's response. He's Team CYO. Well, we recently learned of another team, and that's Team Jack. Team Jack consists of Jack Knowles, Will Hathaway, and Jane Vogel. And this team works behind the scenes to plot and plan various schemes to make Jessica Flintoff's life hell. Yes, it's all there in the FOIA materials, a lot of damaging information. I'm sorry, damning and damaging information. And we learned Jack Knowles was not just planting poisonous seeds with the incoming board members, but also with potential candidates for an interim manager that the three of them were recruiting and interviewing, before trustee Vogel and supervisor had even taken offense. It's not a surprise to you, and I'm sorry, it may not surprise you, that one of the candidates was a close appointment of Jack's from his dealings with the OHM regarding CYO business. And all of this was taking place totally...
Thirty seconds.
...of the existing board members at that time. And yes, CYO residents, in case you were wondering, Team Jack is still in operation behind the scenes, as evidenced by three questionable nominees for the Compensation Commission. I ask you again Supervisor Hathaway, when is this hostility and prejudiced behavior toward Clerk Flintoff going to stop? What is going to take for the CYO board members to start behaving in a transparent, productive, civilized manner?
Time.
Thank you Pat. Next up is Jillian Carey, followed by Kathleen Brandt. Jillian?
Good evening.
Hi Jillian. Can you speak up a bit, please?
Oh, sure. Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. You know, there's been a, as we know, there's been a lot of issues regarding these different committees, appointments and nominations, and just even how a committee is supposed to be run. And I keep thinking back to the Township Administration Committee, and I found some FOIA emails that... They're a little disturbing, because this Township Administration Committee was supposed to create a position in the committee itself. So it was Supervisor Hathaway, Clerk Jessica, trustee Kathy Knoll, David Reed, and Diane Benson. And they were supposed to create one position together and then present it to the board. Well, I found some emails stating secret meetings between Supervisor Hathaway, trustee Jane Vogel, and trustee Alex Jerome. And they were discussing what they wanted in this committee, and then they would have Supervisor Hathaway take it back to the committee. And in these emails, they were also... Some of these were about not allowing Jessica to get what she wants, or Jessica. And actually, there was... Her name wasn't even spoken. It was JF, JF. And I am very... You know, what was the point of having this Township Administration Committee? When, you know, was that pomp and circumstance, or what? Or is it a dog and pony show? And I kind of expect this from Supervisor Hathaway and trustee Vogel now, after reading a lot of these emails. But trustee Jerome, I am very shocked and really heartbroken. I sat in a lot of Planning Commission meetings, and I witnessed you as the Chair speaking to residents when there were different developments that came up in front of you. And you were very much listening to residents and making your decisions based on consideration of residents. But now I find that you're working behind the scenes with Supervisor Hathaway and trustee Vogel. What else are you working behind the scenes on? This is just... You know, and I even went to other people...
Thirty seconds.
Before the election, asking to support you to run for supervisor. Now I regret believing in you. Thank you.
Thank you Jillian. Next up is Kathleen Brandt, followed by Pam Boyd. Kathleen?
Hi Kathleen Brandt, CYO Township. I want to address something that's going to come up later regarding personnel for the Treasury team. I want to challenge the notion that cash receivables is the biggest time-consuming effort in the Treasury Department. I stated this in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, that I did some research. Saline Township has 2,000 residents. They have online payments on their webpage. Now, we know in CYO Township, we have just over 17,000 population. We have 6,000 households. I questioned, why are we not rapidly moving to an online platform? In my view, there is some kind of... The only person that's trying to move us into the 20th century is Clerk Jessica Flintoff. She is driving the online platform for paying bills. She initiated for utility and not Treasurer Palmer. So to supplement Treasurer Palmer's staff and to state that their priority is cash receivables is not based in reality, and it's based 30 years ago.
Thank you Kathleen. Next up is Pam Boyd. Pam? I'm sorry. Pam, can you speak now?
Hi.
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. That's what I meant. Thank you.
Awesome. Pam Boyd, old CYO resident. Why residents don't trust you? At one time, I too was part of the silent majority. I was ignorant as to what decisions were made on residents' behalf. Because I spoke up and asked questions, I'm now a part of the disparaged small group of residents. You inferred that we were bullying you when you didn't like what we said in late winter. And when that didn't work, you are now calling us a small group of residents. What do you plan to call us next? A comment about the Budget and Finance meeting. Wow. It has me very concerned about what trustee Palmer, Treasurer Palmer, and Supervisor Hathaway's not-so-social plans. Palmer, or Treasurer Palmer and Supervisor Hathaway's not-so-some plans. The narcissistic document of supervisor duties that some of you bought and voted in will most likely tear our township apart, as evidenced by that BNF meeting. I want to give thanks to what Leanne said, that you trustees, all of this is going to be part of your legacy. And I feel for you. In what world is it in the best interest for a leader to be so deeply involved in every meeting? What comes to mind is that of a dictatorship.
Thank you, Pam. I see no other Zoom hands. I do see trustee Knoll's hand. Will?
Trustee Knoll, did you want to respond to a comment, a public comment?
Yes, I do. I was present for the recent Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and I was appalled. I have already communicated this to Will. We're going to be discussing it more. His treatment of Tessaca was inappropriate. And I think we need to hear from the other trustees. I'd like to know if they have watched the meeting. Nobody is well-served by this behavior. The residents aren't well-served, the board isn't well-served, and Jessica as an individual is not well-served. We need to do more to support her and help her. And that is not happening. So I'm going to ask board members to consider this from a different perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Does that conclude public comment?
One more. Paula G. Paula?
Yeah, can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just very disturbed when I saw the documents with OHM with past supervisor Knoll's directing about the LoMA property. And I would be extremely upset if I was them. And I think there's actually, my own opinion is that the DDA, the TAP Committee, and the administrative cabal of putting Supervisor Hathaway in charge of every meeting as the moderator. There's, there's something very suspicious going on. And I also think the Washtenaw County Road Commission has some issues in there. And the DDA came up with money for, for the roundabout at Liberty. I think this is all related to shunting traffic, the whole MAVD property and the plans there. And just having been involved with different issues, including when different people owned the Toll Brothers properties and they wanted to take everybody off of, in country French, and Arbor Point Polo Fields. And there was a whole push to accommodate and go around what residents wanted. And this is very similar. And I got a lot of pushback when I organized people against that onsite sewer system. And that was all because there was a lack of capacity. And I think Rob Pattinson's, and with this whole thing about sewer capacity, we're more concerned about a bike path and putting $750,000 when we have major issues with water, roads. And my personal experience with the horrible car accident, when the Washtenaw Road Commission knew all about for three years
Thirty seconds.
...were three a week, and many people hurt and an individual killed. And I think those kind of priorities are more important than shunting traffic down Park Road and having residents pave that, so it can be a major cut through. And we still, when I talk about Jack's Z Road's speed limit, that's a separate problem. At least we got the light now. But I think that this board and the five, and what Jack Knowles is doing is not in benefiting the residents whatsoever. And I have no trust
Thank you. Thank you, Paula.
I just want to finish my sentence. I have no trust in you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I see no other interested public. We have 59 people in attendance.
Thank you. That brings us to the next agenda item, which is public hearings. The first public hearing is on the Fire Protection Services Special Assessment role. As the agenda background explains, the board is required to hold an annual public hearing on the Fire Protection Services Special Assessment role. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment upon or object to that special assessment. Are there any members of the public present who would like to address this, the board during this public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. We need to call the public hearing to order first. Public hearing is called to order at, I guess, what time?
Fifty-three?
Seven?
Seven fifty-three, excuse me.
Seven fifty-three. Is there anyone present either in person or remotely who would like to address the board on the Fire Protection Services Special Assessment role?
And this is the annual role, no changes. I see one Zoom hand. First up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
I would like to apologize for running over the three-minute timeline in past comments. I had my speakers turned off so that my microphone was clear with no feedback, and I apologize that I ran over the time. Thank you.
No worries, Rob. I'm sorry. I just muted you. Anyone else interested in speaking on the public hearing? Gillian Carey. Gillian?
Yes. If Donna was here, she could explain what this Special Assessment role is, because we do have a millage and just to educate the residents. But I fully support our firefighters. They are amazing. They show up when they need to, and they are true public servants. So yes, I support this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Gillian. I see no other interested public. Will?
In that case, close the public hearing, or do we need to call a vote?
A motion?
Oh, we need a motion. Is there a motion? I make a motion to close the public hearing at seven fifty-five?
Support.
Support from Corteau. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
The second public hearing is on the Woodview Commons Final P V Site Plan SP number 20009. And this is, we, the board learned a requirement before we take action to give final approval to the final site plan. I call the public meeting to, or the public hearing to order at 7:56 PM. Is there anyone present who would like to address the board during this time?
Hello, Timothy Boggs, 7235 Jackson Road. How you doing?
You can call me Tim.
Tim.
Just figured it's easier. So I just was looking through the plans online. I still do not see an actual site plan besides the verbiage that is talking about the senior housing, the public storage, the ranch, the ranch housing that's going to be going in there. But nothing that is an actual site plan showing what would be backing up to my property side, besides going off of the verbiage, which is talking, the west side is this, and the high tractor supply here. Or nor is there anything that's stating what type of barrier there will be between the properties?
There's, it's, it's a little hard to find, but there is a link in the agenda item to the full site plan. So it is, it is there, but I
I'll take a look.
It is a little difficult to find, in part because the full site plan is so many pages that if we put it in the meeting packet, it would be half the meeting packet.
When are they going to be starting phase one of this? It looks like there's three phases.
We will have some discussion of, I mean, it's a little odd because we're having a public hearing first.
Right.
There will be some further discussion of the proposed development when we get to that item later on the agenda.
Okay. So Yeah, it seems like I'm pulled late into the game on this. It looks like it's been two years in the making through Planning Commission, and I get the first notice that I see of something going up there, as well as having, you know, site surveys and stuff done, where all of a sudden I see stakes and, you know, pink flags ran all up and down the property side there, just wondering what was going on, to where I actually contacted the owner that owns the property of tractor supply to find out what was going on. So, you know, the backside of my property is probably only about 150 feet, but I just want to make sure I'm not going to be looking at dumpsters and everything else down there. Thank you.
And Tim, for the record, could you please tell us again the address?
7235.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is it? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now that service.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board during this public hearing? Please come up.
John Kusandjian. I own 7555 Jackson Road, and I just want to say that this is the third time I've received a letter
Yeah.
...informing me that there was a public hearing. So just referring to Tim or whoever, this isn't the first time you've called it to our attention. Thank you.
Great. May I be done?
Would you like to speak? Please come up.
My name's Regina Russell, and I live at 2917 Tusler Road, Ann Arbor. I own 10 acres that will join this property that they're wanting to build on. And I've received all the notices and everything about it, and I found it online real easy and everything. It's on there. It shows everything. And it's been two years, so I'm hoping how soon they can start building on this. We need a senior home. We need condos, townhomes. I personally can't find one anywhere, so I'm interested in getting one if it ever starts. We need housing. The, you can tell the prices of Ann Arbor is outrageous, and as soon as a property goes up, it's gone that day. You can't even get a house. So we really do need more housing here in Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the public hearing? Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, I see a hand from Ryan Yapple. Ryan?
Thanks, Jessica. I own 7535 Jackson Road, the property just north of John's and Regina's. I'm a neighbor as well. I ultimately support this project. I agree, there's a large need for housing in this area, and ultimately, it looks like a very well thought-out and developed project, and I hope we're able to see that move forward here in the spring. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. I see no other Zoom hands.
In that case, is, I make a motion to close the public hearing at 8:00 PM.
To what?
Support from Corteau. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
That brings us to the consent agenda. There are now four items remaining on the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move the model motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Moved by Jerome.
Support.
Support by Knoll. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed. Excuse me, John. John, could I ask you to shut that door, please? Thank you.
Thanks. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item is H1, which is the possible action to approve the hire of Doug Armstrong as full-time Assistant Chief slash Fire Marshal.
Thank you. Good evening, board. So we're at a point here, we've been working on this project for about six months. Some time ago, we, as a board, recognized the need for this position, and we discussed various member methods of ways to pay for it, and the board has adopted a fee schedule. Lastly, the board's adopted a job description, which has gone through HR and legal, and was going to get the job done. The last part of the process here, typically, a position such as this comes from within a department. We solicited members of the department and received one application. That's current Assistant Chief Doug Armstrong. As you can see from his resume, Doug's been a member of this department for well over 20 years. He's always been active and involved, and he continues to be very active and involved today. In fact, Doug took on some of these responsibilities already on his own. I think I've shared with the board a number of the issues we've discovered within the community. And in one in particular, we had a condo association who was having difficulty following fire code and getting their suppression system serviced and maintained and putting residents at risk. Throughout that process, Doug got involved, and Doug related to me the first conversation he had with them on site. We'd given them direction to get this project, hey, we've got to get this thing fixed, people's lives are on mine. And Doug took the approach that is the right one. He went out and met with the owner and said, hey, look, we're not here to yell at you, argue and fight. I want to show you the things that we got to get done and why, and make the residents face the fear. And that immediately put them on a great working relationship, and as of today, Doug is working through getting this problem resolved. Action, if you were to take it today, is not the end of the process. It's only the beginning. If the board acts to hire Doug today, the hard work begins. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm very confident that Doug will be able to get this job done. With that, I'd ask if the board has any questions for me or Assistant Chief Armstrong, who happens to be in the audience tonight.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Knoll?
I don't have a question or comment. Welcome, Doug. Can you guys hear me? Is there an echo?
We can hear you. No echo.
Okay. So congratulations, Doug. I think you will be an asset, and thank you.
And, and a comment too, and Doug, I, I just want to say, you know, there, that you are exactly the right person for this job. I'm excited that you're going to be the one out there, being the friendly enforcer as we get our building inspections up, up to date. And I know how well you and the chief work together, and so I'm just glad that you're able to be his second-in-command and be our Cyo Township Fire Marshal.
Couple things you see before you in your packet. We established a pay rate that is 5% less than the fire chief. Pretty standard. Pretty standard and, and right now we're contemplating, the board is contemplating a mileage reimbursement as Doug will be using his own vehicle. Two reasons really. Number one, we can't get vehicles and number two, I think the board would agree and I note both Doug and I do, that when we do get a vehicle for this position, it needs to be something that's more sustainable. We're hoping that within the next year or so, we can start converting our staff vehicles to EVs and doing our part for sustainability in CIO. So in, in the interim, Doug will need a vehicle to get around and his vehicle is appropriate for that.
And I, I think that makes sense. We always shied away from a car allowance, but the mileage reimbursement is what we do for the assessing staff and others. So I think that makes sense.
Are there other comments or questions from members of the board of trustees? Trustee Corto?
Just again, a brief comment to say, um, thank you, chief, for a very clear and smooth process and, uh, thank you, assistant, new assistant chief, I hope, Armstrong. Welcome. I, it sounds like your skills are exactly what we need and I think the township is lucky to have you. Thank you.
If there aren't any other comments or questions, I'm very pleased to invite someone to make the model motion to hire Doug Armstrong to the position of full-time assistant chief fire marshal at a rate of pay of $86,176 per year. Is someone prepared to make that motion?
Some moved.
Moved by
I think we'd all welcome, we'd all welcome the opportunity.
So it looked like, uh, moved by Corto, support by Noel. Please call the roll. Oh, do we have to invite, actually, we have to allow public comments? Excuse me, I'm skipping a step there.
So, but it was moved by Corto, support by Noel, and now calling public comments?
Now for public comments. Yes. Is there anyone either present or participating remotely who would like to comment before we take a vote?
I see two hands. First up, Rob Pattinson, followed by Jillian Carey.
Thank you. I would like to thank the board and Chief Hood for treating this situation as an emergency and getting the, um, the fire inspections and the staffing to do it so quickly. And this will go a long way towards protecting the community and protecting lives of firefighters who have to run into these buildings when they're burning. So thank you all. Very well done.
Thank you, Rob. Next up, Jillian Carey. Jillian?
Congratulations, Chief Armstrong. This is really exciting. You complete the fire department now and with a new building, a remodeled building and whatnot, I know that you and Chief Hood are going to do our, our firefighters good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. All right, that's all the public comment. Go.
In that case, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoft, yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Batic, yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, chief. Congratulations, Assistant Chief Armstrong.
Thank you, board. That brings us to unfinished business, item H2, which is the possible action on Woodview Commons Final PUD Site Plan SP number 20009. And we have representatives of Woodview present, if you would like to come up to the table. We also have, I think, participating remotely, we have Doug Luan.
And also Matt Parks.
And Matt Parks and possibly someone else from OHM. I'm not sure if Sally's also on.
I'll bring them in as panelists so that they can join.
Okay. I think typically the way that we handle these is we allow the developer or the owner of the property to be developed to present first and then we invite a comment from our planning consultant. Is that, did you come prepared to do that or?
I, I thought Doug was going to make a
Oh, we can do it that way too.
Okay.
Doug, if, if you're on, if you would like to introduce this agenda item?
Sure. Hello, everybody.
Hi, Doug.
So little background here. This is a, uh, project. It's a mixed-use project, really at this, where Baker Road ends into Jackson Road. So it's, it's south of that intersection. The project contains a little over 90 acres. There are three properties involved, three separate properties involved. They will, of course, be combined when this project is finally approved. The project consists of several different elements. Approximately 48,000 square feet of flex retail space, a 156-unit senior care facility, a self-storage facility, and a mixture of residential rental housing types. That include what is called stacked flats, about 252 units of the stacked flats, attached ranches of 113 units, and 59 townhomes. So that, that totals out to 424 total residential units. The residential portion of this development will also have a centrally located clubhouse for the project. In addition to all of the, the various uses on site, there's a significant amount of open space that is being proposed as well as a pathway that will run the entire, along the entire western edge of the project. That will be a public pathway that will link eventually be able to link Jackson Road then down south from there and then to the east, ultimately to Stabler Road. As part of the project, the applicant is also, in addition to the open space and the path, the applicant is making financial contributions to the fire department as well as making some upgrades to the water system for this, for this project, the township water system. And again, the, the pathway is the other part of it. So this project, just for those watching at home or maybe watching this video later, is what's called a planned unit development. And a planned unit development is a rezoning to a specific plan. So the plan that gets, ultimately gets approved, whether it's tonight or at some future meeting of the township board, the plan that ultimately will get approved, approved unless amended, which PUDs can get amended, it, it turns out to be the, it's the only thing, uh, the only development that can occur on here has to be in conformance with the approved plan. So a PUD is a rezoning to a specific plan. Once that's approved, the development on that piece of property has to follow that plan. If, if the applicant wants to change that plan, they of course can do that, uh, but they would have to come back before the township in some, in some fashion to make changes. The planning commission recommended approval of this project. The planning commission made that recommendation on February of 2021, so a number of months ago. They had, they had some conditions in their approval. Those conditions are listed in the information that the township board has. And the applicant, from what I can tell, has met, either met or can meet those conditions. So this is a mixed-use project. It's being proposed as a planned unit development. The property, the property itself is found within what's called the Jackson Road Overlay District. The Jackson Road Overlay District allows mixed-use projects that could include commercial, office, industrial, and high-density residential. So this is, uh, this project is in keeping with the Jackson Road Overlay District. And the, and the way the ordinance is written, the only way they can do that or, you know, that mixed-use project is to move forward as a planned unit development. So that's what is being proposed this evening. And if there's any questions from board members or ultimately maybe folks from the public, I can certainly try to answer those questions.
Thanks. Thank you, Doug. And we have also the township engineer consultant. Are there any comments you would like to offer? Matt?
Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good, good. No, um, I mean, our letter, Doug, Doug did a great job as usual, given the overview. Our last letter dated April 15th outlines the basics that Doug just covered. It should just be noted, um, uh, the way the plan's presented and, and there is a different, different aspects to the job, both residential and, and commercial. It is asking for, and I'm not 100% sure if the board's going to be taking action on the REUs tonight, I would think so, but there is 554 REUs included in this. Obviously, if phasing or changes were made to the commercial components over time as this all developed, or and Doug mentioned the word amendments to the PUD were necessary that, that could come back to the board. But I just wanted to kind of lay out there and I, I assume the question probably would be asked. And I did a presentation to the board a couple, maybe a month ago or so, about remaining REUs. There's about 2,200 REUs left in the Jackson Road District. And Liberty Road District also has about 1,000 plus or minus. So really you're looking at a total of about 3,300 REUs contractually that the township has left. And this is going to represent 500 of those. So quite a, a bit, but this is consistent with what, how the board's operated in the past, this first come, first served and, and the site plan and everything that we reviewed, the detailed engineering meets engineering standards. The only comment we had in our April letter was essentially any phasing or deviations from what they were going to do with the, you know, any portions of that may require an amendment later down the road. And that, that is consistent on how we've handled larger PEDs in the past where a concept was approved and then the developer moves forward building chunks of the development. And if any deviations from the original PUD were there, then Doug and I and others from the township would look at it and, and verify whether or not an amendment's needed. So other than that, the applicant's been moving forward obtaining other permits. And we list those on the end of our letter. So we're happy to answer any questions and basically are at the point with the engineering where this is ready for board consideration.
Thank, thank you, Matt. Well. Oh. Trustee Noel?
Yes, I have, excuse me, a quick question. Doug Luan referenced upgrades to the water system that the developer will be doing. Could you describe those in more detail?
I believe the, um, the upgrades that are, uh, being offered by the applicant is a, is in the form of a monetary amount. I don't know that specific upgrades to specific parts of the system have been identified yet. Matt, Matt may know if that, if it's gone that far, but it's my understanding that there is an amount that the applicant will be, you know, a dollar amount that the applicant will be willing to, um, uh, put into the system for upgrades to that system. I'm not sure if specific items have been addressed yet. So Matt, I'm not sure if you have more insight on that than I do.
No, so exactly right. It was a monetary contribution and honestly, the, based on the water reliability study and everything that we have in
Trustee Noel, does that answer, were you looking for something?
Your audio just went out.
I, I stopped talking because I heard Will, Will speak. Just to recoup where Doug was at, monetary contribution, um, it is basically correct. It, it could go towards a numerous amount of projects outlined in the water reliability study. So whether that's contributing, his contributions would go towards Liberty Road Water Main, which is, you know, got two phases and will be happening over the next two years or some other, uh, water improvement in the future. Any of those would, would, would suit it based on it being on the west side of the township. Any, there's a variety of improvements that are identified as part of those studies, so.
What is the monetary amount that they'll be contributing?
And is that 500,000? $500,000? And is that in the development agreement or is that in the attachment?
Yeah, please, please.
Doug, it's in the development agreement here.
This is David Stone. Why don't you introduce yourself?
David Stone, president of Billmore Development, 736 South Pleasant, Royal Oak, Michigan, 48067. The community benefit section of the development agreement contains a provision in it where we're making a contribution to water system or water fund, if you will, over a period of time as we are completing units, stage payments along the way.
That's on page 16 of the development agreement casings.
Thank you.
As well a contribution to the township fire department, $225,000 to the township to defray the township's cost of either building a new fire station and/or purchasing a new fire truck with aerial ladder.
Correct.
A question from the public, though I discourage use of chat. Please save your comments for public comment, but we did get a question. We're throwing around the term REU. Matt, will you please explain what an REU is?
Yeah, the township, REU stands for residential equivalent unit. It's approximately the amount of water sewer that a single-family home uses. That is approximately 300 gallons per day. We're consistent with how Ann Arbor calculates that. So an REU is 300 gallons per day.
Are there other comments or questions from members of the board of trustees?
Will?
Oh, sorry.
Jackie and Alan had their hands on first.
Okay, and then you.
Sure.
Okay. So trustee Corto and then trustee Jerome?
So as described in the packet, um,
Oh, she frozen?
Am I frozen?
You're all frozen.
Uh-oh. I hear you. Do you hear me?
I hear you.
I hear you.
But they don't hear me.
Let's just talk.
No, you can just chat them on yourselves.
Okay. Everybody
Do you hear me now?
Yeah, so here you now. Could you guys hear each other during that?
You can hear each other.
Oh.
Okay.
I will start again.
I'm not going to guess. Go ahead.
As described in the packet, very late in the site plan process, after in fact, the planning commission had approved the final site plan, the parks interns working in a nearby preserve discovered a heron rookery previously not recorded by the state and of a significant size and, and we believe importance to the previously not recorded by the state and of a significant size, and, and we believe important to the state. And so we did some study on what would be needed to protect it. And I, I just do wanna say that I really appreciate the efforts that have been made to acknowledge, um, that rookery and work toward protecting it and, uh, be flexible about thinking about how the plan can be modified to most, to best protect that rookery. And I appreciate the willingness to, to make a commitment to that, um, in, in, in the statement than, that you submitted. So I guess I would just look at that as, um, a really important part of this project that not only is it saving, um, some, some natural area and wetlands, but, um, buffering along the edge of a rookery that's in our preserve, um, in, in an important way. So if the applicant wants to talk about that further, I'd be happy to hear that. I just wanted to point out, I, I view that as a, a real positive in, in the work that's been done here. Thank you.
Do you wanna respond now, or do you wanna?
Do you want me, you tell me, because I don't order. You want me to sort of, you want me to make a short presentation or a short thing, and then I can respond to that, or?
Well, actually, why don't we go through the rest of the questions in case there's other questions or comments, and then you can respond to all of them all at once. Trust, trustee Jerome was next, and then.
Yeah, mine's more of a comment than anything else. This has obviously been in front of the planning commission for a long time, actually, a, um, number of years. And I do want to, um, acknowledge that the Jackson Road Overlay District has had, uh, well, actually, other proposals over the years. And I think this is a great mixed-use development that actually highlights some residential opportunities for different market segments for the township, as well as some, uh, retail opportunities. And I do want to acknowledge, just like, uh, trustee Corto did, that the applicant has made significant contributions to, uh, specific, uh, portions of the township funding, uh, regarding water, uh, as well as, uh, the pathway and accommodating some site changes that were necessitated by this discovery of, uh, a natural feature that was essential, we felt, to one of our preserves. So I just wanna make sure that everyone's clear, and that was on the record. And I, uh, would also encourage, uh, Mr. Stone to, uh, highlight, uh, any other things that we might have missed.
Clerk Flinton.
Sure, just a practical question, um, probably more for the supervisor. So what is the status of the development agreement? The model motion has, uh, last sentence in it that says the Woodview Commons Development Agreement is approved subject to further review by the township attorney? So if we were to approve tonight, what, what is the, precisely what is the status of the development agreement?
I, I, thank you. I checked with, um, the township attorney just today and, um, asked him if I had captured that correctly. He said, actually, there is no need for further review. He's already reviewed the development agreement and, um, commented on it. I was, I was a little unclear when I got the materials for the, um, the meeting packet, uh, in part because it's, um, identified as a draft. But he's already reviewed it and already commented on it and already given comments to, uh, back to the developer. So I'm not sure that there's any further review required.
Okay, so has our attorney approved?
I believe so.
The content?
You, you've had the most recent communications, um, with, um, our township attorney. And there's nothing still unresolved, is there?
You know what, I probably should have my, our attorney is on Zoom, so, uh, Kevin Coles, if you wanna bring him up.
He's not, he's not under K. See him on here. I see a phone number.
Kevin Coles has his hand raised.
Oh, thank you. And, yes, Kevin.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Supervisor, Township Board. The development agreement is almost complete from our perspective. We do have, um, attorney Fink's comments, which we received Friday. We've reviewed them, uh, and I would say there's some, you know, legal, um, uh, nits that we need to review in that agreement with Jim and finalize the agreement. And, you know, just, uh, a variety of, uh, the changes that he made were accompanied by questions in part. And, uh, we're prepared to roll up our sleeves and knock that out immediately.
So maybe it is appropriate to leave in further review?
Yeah, or maybe, um, um, final approval?
Final approval.
I'd be more comfortable with that.
Sure. So change in the model motion, further review to final approval?
Yes.
Are there any other comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? I see a hand-raised trustee Noel.
Yes, I spoke with Jim Fink this afternoon and asked him some specific questions about the development agreement. And I was satisfied with his answers. He did review things that.
Oops, did we lose her?
We did. This is, we're having some, uh, new types of problems. New problems. Yeah, she, she's completely cut out. We'll wait for her to rejoin, though.
Okay. While we're waiting for trustee Noel, are there any other, uh, comments or questions from other members of the Board of Trustees? I don't see any. We'll just see if we can get her back. Then, uh, maybe we can switch to your presentation.
Sure.
Maybe she knows she's out.
By now, I would hope. Maybe she's having some inner problems. You might wanna move forward.
All right. Well, why don't we proceed? David, if you wanna.
Sure. I will keep this brief. Good evening. Again, my name's David Stone, I'm the president of Billmore. It's nice to see you all again. My team and I are here, behind me, and also, as you know, Kevin on Zoom. Kind of going out of order, so I apologize. As an overview, we've worked on this project for over two and a half years, uh, very cooperatively with the township, uh, many number of issues. In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the, uh, planning commission recommended unanimously approval of the preliminary PUD. That was followed by a unanimous approval by the township board, um, uh, of the preliminary PUD. Uh, in February of two thousand twenty-one, we received, uh, uh, unanimous recommendation. Uh-oh, please. Interesting.
They're, they're, um, using our office temporarily, so nothing to be worried about.
In February, we received unanimous recommendation of approval from the, uh, planning commission. I won't go through all the details as far as, because Doug spent a good amount of time going through it, so it's a bad parks. Uh, but essentially, the plan that you see in front of you is the same plan that was, uh, put, uh, forward, uh, to the township board previously. There have been some minor modifications, really technical issues that were, uh, brought up by outside reviewing agencies, and those were all addressed. We have, as far as changes that were made, um, the township board members, and I apologize, the attorney. During this process, uh, there was a request by the township, it would be the planning committee, it was a TAP, if I have that right, to talk about the pathway. And, uh, we spent several months working, uh, with them on the pathway. Ultimately, the pathway was, uh, where they, uh, it was resolved, the location of the pathway. We then adjusted all of our plans accordingly and had shifted over to, uh, address those. And the pathway is, you know, now sort of locked in in terms of its location. As far as the blue heron rookery, uh, we became aware of that in July, late June, right in July. Obviously, we were as surprised as, uh, the township was. And we have tried to react to it in as cooperative a fashion as possible. We understand it's of important interest to the township. And that is, uh, why we submitted that letter to the township, um, to delay any construction in that area. We intend and are working on, uh, revising a site plan and presenting an alternate plan that will do even more to, to protect the rookery. Unfortunately, given the timing of the situation, and then with the tail end of this after, uh, this whole process, uh, you know, we're here to, you know, for the approval. But we have all intent, uh, our intent is to come up with a better plan that, now that we know there's an issue, to resolve that. And we'll be back here, I would assume, very shortly, you know, to present that. Happy to answer any questions you have. Oh, yay.
Kathy, do you, sorry, we lost you, as you probably figured out. Were you, did you have something further that you wanted to say or ask?
No, I'm fine. I'm good.
All right. In that case, um, are there members of the public who would like to ask questions or speak before we move to, uh, a vote?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. First up is Paula G. Paula? Paula? Anybody else?
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Hi, Paula.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about, um, the contribution with the REUs and how this will affect the current water rates for residents that currently pay huge water bills already. What's, uh, what is our contribution, um, going to be? I guess how is it gonna affect our water bills?
Okay, question about water bills. Thank you, Paula. Next up, Liz Wiseman, you're unmuted. I don't know if you wanted to speak. I don't see any other Zoom hands. If you'd like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand.
Hello?
Yes, hi, Liz.
Hi there. I do school. I'm interested in knowing how the herons.
How, how the herons will be protected?
Fair question.
Well, um, I, I can speak to that, and you, and others can add in. I know trustee Corto has, um, been very involved in this as well. But, um, the heron rookery is, uh, the nesting area is located in the township nature preserve to the south of the site. And there's in, um, yeah, um, meeting materials there. You'll find, um, an environmental assessment that was done for the township after the heron nesting area was discovered. And, um, the conclusion was that the site plan, as proposed this evening, does a very good job of, um, sort of distancing the human activity from the, the nesting area. In, in, uh, the recommendation was that, um, during construction, uh, that care be taken to, um, do the construction in the area closest to the nesting area, um, in the sort of off-season in terms of the blue herons. And, um, that's relatively easy to accomplish through, through, you know, sort of planning. However, um, there was also a recommendation that, um, if possible, to create a little bit more distance, a, a greater buffer zone around the nesting area. And so, um, the developer, um, has been working, um, on an alternative plan. However, it will require amendments to the, um, PUD, to the, the site plan, and have to go through the planning commission in order to achieve that different plan. And that's, that's what's proposed, um, that's what's, what the letter, uh, submitted by the developer is really meant to, um, accomplish is, is to sort of indicate the, um, willingness and the, and the intent to pursue that alternative plan and create a greater buffer zone around the, the blue heron nesting area. Does that, does that address the question?
Yes.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Liz. Next hand is Kathleen Brand. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brand, Rio Township. I, I wanna ask, um, it's in conjunction with the last comment. How does the township plan on monitoring the commitments from the developer for this buffer zone or, uh, timely construction cycle? We saw a failure on the Botsford Preserve, and, um, how does the township plan on monitoring that?
That may be a better question for Doug, if Doug is still on. Doug is our enforcement officer as well as our planning consultant.
I, I am, in fact, still around. The, um, so PUD is a, is a very, uh, specific type of approval. And as I mentioned in my opening comments, it's, it's resigned to a specific plan. And unlike other situations, other just kind of general situations within the township, the township has a fair amount of control over a planned unit development. They, they can only do what is, what is specifically shown on the approved site plan. So, for example, um, in the, in the development agreement of this project, which is a written, uh, agreement that's separate from the site plan itself, the development agreement talks about, um, when the various parts of the pedestrian pathway are to be constructed. And there's some language in there that indicates that, you know, that the, the pathway has to be constructed on, before the next phase of development is, will be permitted to move forward. And there, there are triggers like that within the development agreement. Ultimately, it's really up to the township, uh, to, uh, approve or hold what we call zoning compliance certificates for the various parts of the project. So a developer could get going on a project, and if things are going well, the township would simply keep issuing zoning compliance certificates. If the, if a developer began a project and things, you know, weren't going well, and developer wasn't performing the way that they're supposed to perform, uh, one of the immediate things we can do is just stop issuing, uh, zoning compliance certificates, which tends to get the attention of the developer, um, to correct issues that are, that are, that are problematic. At the end of a project, really any project, it can just be a standard site plan or a PUD, the township will ultimately have, uh, some money that is collected, uh, in the form of a bond or a letter of credit. I suppose it could also be cash, but it's usually not cash. It'd be a, like a construction bond or letter of credit that's held by the township to ensure that all of the items that are in the approved plan are completed. If they're not, uh, the township can cash that bond or letter of credit out and try to complete some of those things ourselves. That's extremely rare, thankfully, that we ever have to go to those measures. But that's another way that we use to, uh, ensure that the various elements of the plan are, are carried out and finished the way that they are planned. So as I said, this is a planned unit development. The township has quite a bit of, um, control over the situation. And the applicant will have to be interacting with us, really from, from the very beginning to the very end of construction. So I'm, I'm, I'm confident that we will be able to, uh, you know, keep an eye on things and make sure that the applicant is performing what they said they will perform. what they said they will perform.
Thank you, Doug.
As long as you're on, Doug. There was an earlier question from another resident about what the potential cost might be once the development is built and is using all of those REUs. I don't know if that's a question for you, or if that's a question for Matt, or if that's a question for our utilities director, Steve Wagauski.
Yeah, not me. That would, that would be either Matt or Steve.
Yeah, and I would, I would lean on Steve. What I would say is that not only is the developer making contributions towards utilities as part of their community benefits summary and development agreement, but they're also paying tap fees for all the individual resident taps. Some of that money gets passed through the Ann Arbor, but SIO keeps some of that for some of its ongoing maintenance and, and, and connections and CIP improvements in the future. So, Steve just jumped on. So, before I mess up anything on the rates and utility bills, I'll let him keep going. But the contributions they're making here as part of the community benefits is separate and independent of their rates and tap fees.
Thanks. Steve, I don't know if you heard the question earlier. There was a resident, Paula G., who asked about, or expressed concern about whether there might be any impact on current customers, a cost impact from this development coming on and using additional REUs.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any impact. But part of the study that Matt and his team are doing right now is to optimize our water use. You know, with the advent of the additional storage, that will even out the demand. So, if we did have a contract, we do have a contract with Ann Arbor with a peak flow. And we want to make sure that we don't exceed that. There are, there is a possibility that Ann Arbor could invoke a penalty if we exceed that, but they have not chosen to be back to date. And so, I don't anticipate any increased rates. We pay per gallon.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who have questions or comments?
I see, no, I don't see any additional Zoom hands.
In that case...
Oh, there's one. That's all I had to say. Sorry, there we have 46 people in attendance. It looks like a follow-up from Paula G. Paula? Maybe not. Paula?
Can you hear me?
I'll be there.
Hi, Paula.
Yeah, well, thank you for the answer on the REUs. But also, with the current development, which was originally Toll Brothers, I always forget the name of the subdivision. It actually has been very little buffer between their building. And I'm lucky because I have the woods behind me. But even with the woods, and actually with the old manager that left, I dealt with the environmental people over at the Washtenaw County Road Commission. Because the amount of dust, literally covering houses, I have pictures of it covering cars in thick layers. I feel really bad for the people that are near Park Road that abut to them, literally their backyards. The control of dust and asphalt smell. I mean, it cover, I didn't bother to wash my, have my windows washed. That's how bad it is. It layers cars, layers houses. So, I think with this whole rookery thing, they're going to really have to, I went twice to the, to the commission that does the environmental for them to go over there. Plus, because they were dumping construction debris in the Honey Creek area that they weren't supposed to be in. So, the monitoring is going to have to be, I think there needs to be some schedule of monitoring that is quite frequent. Because in a private setting where I used to live off of Wagner Road, the developer had to bring in trees to make a buffer. And the buffer for this project is very inadequate. So, I hope this buffer for protection of the rookery will be a lot better than the protection that Arbor Point residents have had to endure over the last three summers. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hi, this is Jonathan Greenberg. I live on Park Road, right in the middle of Trailways construction. I just wanted to let you know that my experience has been very positive since I've been here. Both the McKenzie Group, that has done a lot of the work, and the Biltmore Group have both been very responsive to any concerns that I've brought to them. And I just wanted to kind of give a balanced viewpoint as somebody who's living in the middle of it and has been since, since it started. Just been really good neighbors and wanted to make sure folks understood that, you know, from someone living in the middle of it, they've been a good group to work with. So, just my two cents, and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. One more comment from Kathleen Brandt. Kathleen?
Yeah, hi, Kathleen Brandt, South Township. I just want to suggest that my question was not answered about monitoring the rookery. It was answered in the fashion that there are gateways to the project and that you must complete one aspect of the gate and then you get permission to go over the next gateway. My question is, what is the township doing to monitor the rookery? Jonathan just suggested that as a citizen, he did that, and he has positive feedback, and I think that's great. But it seems there should be some proactive action to monitor, especially such an environmentally sensitive area. So, maybe Trustee Corte could give feedback on how that monitoring might occur. Because it shouldn't be just voluntary citizen involvement. And it shouldn't be that we look at a gateway, and if they didn't make the gateway, then we charge them more money. Because we all know environmentally, if you didn't monitor and something happened, then it's way too late. The monetary penalty does not, no, nothing for the damage done.
Trustee Corte, would you like to respond?
Thank you. So, this rookery was discovered by interns working on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They are continuing to do monitoring in the parks and are looking at, in fact, a broader monitoring effort. I don't know right now what their plans are for continued monitoring of the rookery in specific. But now that we know that it's there, I, I believe that we can work closely with them to set up a monitoring program and also ask that the developer coordinate with them so that we can make sure that there is communication back and forth if there were to be any negative impacts noticed. So, I think we, as the board, can ask Parks and Rec to specifically continue to monitor the rookery. And I see clerk Flintoff, do you have a comment or question about that?
Yeah, you know, one idea too is, is, you know, either, either Parks, if they have the ongoing capacity to monitor. But I'd also suggest that I think that LPC is, already has the monitoring, oh, sorry, just the, the monitoring that we already pay somebody to do kind of on the ongoing basis. And so, I would wonder too if it might fit into that program. I see you shaking your head, so that, that might not make sense. What do you think?
So, so our conservation easement monitoring program that you're referring to is a simply once a year. And of course, we can ask that that be done, although that's focused on conservation easements that are privately held rather than on SIO-preserved properties that we hold. So, it wouldn't normally be included in that, and that's only annual. I, I think to truly monitor effects on the rookery, one would likely want something like at least monthly monitoring during the breeding season. And that really is the work that Parks is doing. And also, I should point out that as we build our staff and hire this new position that is going to work closely on parks and pathways, we might actually be building staff capacity who could take on part of that responsibility as well.
I think that makes sense with the project manager position.
So, so thank you, Ms. Brandt. I appreciate the comments. And yes, I think we need to continue to make sure that we are doing a very careful job, both in our own staff and then working with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
I think the first step really is to protect it with the buffer, creating a buffer around it. And I know that, and Alec, you may be able to speak to this. The, the, there is a plan to put up sort of signage to let people know that they're approaching sort of the edge of the buffer zone around the nesting area, which obviously is in a radius that's greater than the Woodview development. That's just one part of the, of the buffer zone.
Yeah, the Parks has an extensive plan to protect the area and to notify individuals that they're going to be entering it. We also have engaged, who was a past intern, is going to be joining us on a more trail maintenance position. And so, she has been engaged in all the townships, trying to, or in all the preserves, trying, sorry, I'm going to turn my camera so you can hear me, maintaining those pathways. And she is actively monitoring all of the natural features and especially the rookery. So, I think there's going to be a lot of eyes on this. And the Parks is well aware of the sort of precarious and precious nature of this jewel of the township.
Great.
I should add that the herons, I haven't wandered into this area myself since the discovery, but the herons did an excellent job of protecting themselves by choosing one of the most difficult-to-access parts of the nature preserve. It's actually, I think, a vernal pond. So, you have to have waders on to, in order to walk into it. And from what I understand, during the season, it's, it's pretty inhospitable in terms of mosquitoes as well. Are there any other comments or questions? In that case, I'll read the model motion. And I think Trustee Corte was ready to make it. But the model motion is that the Township Board of Trustees approve SP 20009 Woodview Commons Final PUD Site Plan based on the Planning Commission Recommendation of Approval. And with the added condition described in the attached letter from Jackson Road SOBILLC dated 9/23/21, the Woodview Commons Development Agreement, Development Agreement is approved, subject to final approval by the Township Attorney. Moved by Corte?
Moved.
Support, support by Jerome. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corte?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Appreciate all your consideration and moving back with.
Great. Thank you, David.
All right, the next item on the agenda is H3 Possible Actions, Continue Review of Applicants for the Position of Township Administrator. The, we held a staff reception and an interview with David Rowley on Friday, October 22, and then had the opportunity to interact with him further during the Fire Station Halloween event on Sunday. And many members of the public had a chance to interact with him as well. Based on the two rounds of interviews and the application materials, and I think some further feedback we received from Amy Zell, who is overseeing the search process for the township.
And Jennifer's here from her.
Oh, and Jennifer's here, all right. We have a resolution for the board to consider. And I'm sorry, this wasn't in, this wasn't ready in time for the meeting packet, but it's a very brief resolution, and it actually was provided by Amy. This is, let's see here. Actually, I have a copy for you.
Thank you.
So, whereas the Board of Trustees authorized a search for a township administrator, whereas, based on the positive feedback received from the search process and the interviews of the candidate, the Board of Trustees, Staff and Community Feedback recommended David Rowley for the position of Township Administrator. Resolved that David Rowley be offered the position of SIO Township Administrator. Resolved that the supervisor and township's employment attorney negotiate a proposed employment contract with David Rowley and bring a contract back to the Board of Trustees for approval, if possible, at the first meeting in November. So, I would make that resolution, I would move that resolution if there's support.
I'll support.
Support by Corte. Is there discussion? A trust, a clerk.
Fine, justice, fine. So, so I just want to say, I think David Rowley would be a very strong township administrator. And then I'm excited to support, providing, making a conditional offer of employment. I would, this is the first time I'm just seeing this right now. So, I do have some suggested edits to this so that it conforms more with our standard process for offering employment.
Sure.
So, I would say that David Row, that David Rowley, let me just say that the... I'm, I'm struggling with the passive voice. That David Rowley be conditionally offered the position of SIO Township Administrator. So, it's always a conditional offer, conditionally offered, subject to background investigation. And resolved that the supervisor and clerk, I would suggest that be both of us, work with Bill Thacker, our employment attorney, so supervisor and clerk. And that's what we did last time when we went through this process. Both Jack and I worked and negotiated with both our fire chief as well as our other search for manager. Supervisor and clerk and a township's employment attorney negotiate a proposed employment contract with David Rowley and bring back, certainly. I don't think the first meeting in November.
Is that too soon?
I, I think so. So, what I would suggest, you know, for the background investigation, we typically use PIFER. And I would think what's appropriate for a position of Township Administrator, somebody that will be given authority over sensitive information, personnel, all the assets, all the operational systems, having the fire chief, the water operator reporting to them. It's the highest level of responsibility. So, I would suggest that we do a full background check as we do, as we did on our utilities director as well as our fire chief. So, that will probably take about four weeks.
So, second, second week, second meeting in November?
Certainly. And I think if possible is fine, but let's just be realistic.
Okay. Well, those are all friendly amendments. Are there further comments or questions or? Trustee Noel?
Yes, I was very impressed with David, his experience, his qualifications, his interpersonal skills. I look forward to working with him.
Are there other comments or questions? I don't see or hear any other comments from members of the public.
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. I see none. I've gotten very positive feedback from the public as well as I've had a lot of conversations with staff. One thing I'm looking forward to with David and with the way that we've structured the administrator job description is it's about 90% focused on staff and internal operations. And I, I really appreciate David's commitment to ongoing professional development and education. And I think that'll be really a, a great asset for our staff.
Well, if there are no further comments, let's, please call the roll on the resolution as amended.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So that brings us to the item that we added. And this is the, there's a very brief, actually, motion. This is to act on the discussion that we had in our closed session on an LPC, a Land Preservation Commission transaction. So motion to withdraw the financial commitment for Application 2020-03. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Trustee Corto?
Support.
Support from trustee Jerome?
Would you please read the motion one more time?
Sure. It's a motion to withdraw the financial commitment for Application 2020-03.
Okay. And Corto and Jerome?
Corto moved, support by Jerome. And we could have comment, but there isn't much to comment on.
And I see no interest in public. Would you like me to call the roll?
Please do.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to reports. We have report of, well, we have our regular reports. Let's see, I don't have, do I have it on here? The order of.
Yeah, I just have the standard order of Gelman Supervisor, Clerk, Treasurer, and.
Okay. Trustee Noel, would you like to proceed with the report on Gelman?
Yep. There's no Gelman report tonight.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Clerk Flintoff, would you like to give your report?
Sure. First up on elections, we've completed the biennial maintenance on all of the election equipment last Saturday. Second, on recodification, again, I, I lament that the board has again removed a three-minute discussion item on amendments to our fireworks regulations. As we discussed, and you have the work plan, we discuss an ordinance and act on it the next time. So next time I'll have on the agenda both fireworks and liquor, two things I didn't want to mix and should not be mixed. Second is Budget and Finance Committee. Look forward to seeing everybody at our next meeting. As always, third Wednesday of the month at 3:30. The next one is November 17th. As promised, an update on the Woodhill group contract, the $9,000 contract. The board requested an update on that work since two weeks ago when we passed that contract. Utilities has its first meeting scheduled. They've already done quite a bit of housekeeping work. Again, with the Utilities team, it's been mostly working with BSNA and using our enterprise software system in all the ways that it can be used to reform utilities billing, provide an online bill pay, and to implement all the changes to the fees and the rates. What we do at the board table doesn't really get implemented unless we have people who know how to operationalize these things. So they're hoping to wrap that up. They're also going to be, we, they're also going to be helping Steve to finalize his standard operating procedures because there are so many changes to the ways we're doing billing. So they've had their first meeting. Fire, as soon as the contract was approved, Chief Hood met with the Architect, Construction Manager, and Karen Lancaster, the Financial Professional from Woodhill. And they had been holding these meetings on the Fire Station Construction Project every three to four weeks, but they'd been stopped when the contract had been expired and not renewed. This meeting got them caught up to date on expenses, both to date and future. And so now the construction manager's bills are accounted for and up to date. Now current, they will again be meeting in November, so meeting once a month until the fire station is done. On the roughly 10 hours of Woodhill time allocated to the finance team, that meeting has been postponed twice, once by Woodhill and once by us, really due to the fact that Sandy, our Finance Director, has just returned to work half-time and from home on October 18th. Since our last meeting, will return to work full-time in the office on November 7th. Rebecca, our Finance Manager, is out of work from Thursday, the 21st, returning on the 1st. In any case, I am meeting with Colleen Coogan, Principal of Woodhill, to talk about the modifications to our general ledger and accounting that we need to make in order to produce reports that make sense. So that's the, kind of long, but I did want to give a brief update on, on all the issues with, with finance. And I've, I've shared this before and will share this again, is that, you know, CIO Township has been very fortunate to have good fiscal stewardship. That said, our financial accounting and reporting has not been where it needs to be over many, many years. Our general ledger, you know, has not been regularly kept up and reconciled in a timely and regular way. Everything is properly reconciled, but there are lags throughout the year, making these processes and the workflow not make sense. This has been done out of necessity because for a long time, there was just one senior person doing the work here, and it was too much. And so it's a longstanding problem. I will say that I am glad that the Supervisor suggested pulling his items I1, I2, I3, and I4. I will say the series of proposals is a continuation of what has been a reckless path, reckless proposal of the Supervisor with the support of the Treasurer to make our financial reporting really operationally. Operationally, it wouldn't make sense. Staff have expressed, and I have expressed, and we have explained that the work would not get done, and there would be the creation of unnecessary positions. And it is a structure, and I've said this before, and I will say this again, it is a structure that is corruptible. No one does this. The statute is written the way it is. Our structure has been the way it is for very, very good reason. And so I object wholeheartedly. I have provided an alternative, multiple alternatives, included in the resolution that I emailed out to the board. And I'll continue to do everything I can to make sure that the proper checks and balances remain in place. I'll, I'm happy to provide more information, but I will say I require two financial professionals in the Clerk's office in order to take this township to where we need to be with our financial accounting and record keeping. Therefore, if the Treasurer chooses to appoint Sandra Egler, our Finance Director, as Deputy Treasurer, I will fill that position, restructure it a bit into more of a Controller than, instead of a finance, instead of a Finance Director, but will fill that position. So there will not be the cost savings that the Supervisor has reported there would be because the position will need to be filled. So explaining that for the 14th or 15th time to all of my colleagues and continue to invite any of you to speak further about any of this. The last thing is the audit. I want to thank our Finance Director. She wrapped up the final journal entries. The Auditor has delivered our audit from last fiscal year, ending March 31st, and will be here to present at the next meeting. And our Finance Director, Sandy, is working to upload that by November 1st, which is our extended deadline.
That's it. Will?
The Treasurer is not present. Planning Commission, trustee Corto?
Just very briefly, the Planning Commission is working to finalize the master plan in early November. And the Task Force on Environmental Sustainability will meet next Thursday, November 4th at 7, the usual monthly time, with a series of presentations starting, I believe that one will be on water resources.
And Land Preservation Commission?
LPC will be having a special meeting this Thursday, October 28th at 3 o'clock, to discuss issues related to one of the properties that we have been working on negotiations for. And in addition, LPC, together with Parks and Rec, will be doing another Saturdays at CIO Preserves hike on Saturday, November 6th at 10 o'clock at Divine, at the Divine Preserve, which is not one of the preserves that CIO owns by ourselves, but was one that we were in partnership on the acquisition.
Great.
We do not have our representative to the Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee. I do know that work has progressed on both the Parkland Plaza sidewalk and the North Zeeb pathway. The Parks Advisory Board, trustee Jerome?
Um, yes. There is no update on the Parks Advisory Board. We continue to work on plans for the development of the parks we're going to meet next week. I will skip to broadband and tackle that very quickly, just to update people. I think I let everyone know that the gap funding for the, or the gap filling project was awarded for the broadband with the use of ARPA funds. Those have been awarded to Charter Communications, Comcast, Midwest Energy and Communications, and Washmouth Fibers, Washmouth Fiber, I should say, properties. And they are, the county is working through the Contract Administration with all those to determine which applicants will be doing or fulfilling which portions of the gap filling project. In addition, a Michael Wattsa was hired and retained for the implementation and development of the gap filling, of the gap filling project so that we make sure that we're, have good oversight of the funds that are going to be expended in order to fulfill this broadband initiative. That's it.
Great.
Thank you. My report, I have nothing to report about the Downtown Development Authority. It hasn't met since our, our last meeting. The proposals that were brought forward and sort of removed from the agenda because of the Treasurer's absence were carefully considered. They're based on a model that respects the statutory authority of all three of the elected officers of the township. And I'm, I'm disappointed that we weren't able to move that forward this evening. I do intend to work with the Treasurer to bring those back. I know there is disagreement about them, but that does not mean that they are reckless or that they will somehow cause the township to be corrupted. They are actually a very thoughtful way of getting the work done, which is, I think, the focus. We want to look at the functions that have to be performed and make sure that we are providing staff support to get that work completed. That's all I'll say about that at this point. And then it's time to turn to our very long-suffering Utilities Director, Steve. Your report.
Well, good evening again. So it has been a nice, warm fall, but times are changing. So our crew has been pretty busy out winterizing fire hydrants and make sure they don't freeze over the winter. Also, we're expecting the water and sewer line staking, also called the Mistig Program, to start letting up pretty soon. It's amazing how many calls we have, especially with the cable companies and such. We have mistigs every day where we go out and stake the lines for, to make sure nothing is, is harmed during excavation. The lead and copper testing has been completed. The results have been sent to the state, and it would be published in the Consumer Confidence Report early next year. That's also known as the Annual Water Quality Report. We consider, we continue to mowing of the park and 7970 West Liberty property. We're also continuing with our meter and transmitter installation, both in new homes and replacing it old. We have a training session tomorrow on the odor control system at the Jackson Road Pump Station. OHM has been operating that mainly for, since the installation. And we're hoping to get proper training tomorrow and soon after, if need be, and take control of that system. And we're pretty excited about that. The final thing, I guess, is, you know, we've been short-staffed lately due to a, our billing, billing clerk being out and sick leave really accentuates the need for more documentation on, on procedures. We had been training a utility technician to, to learn the duties, and, and he left for another position. And it just, as I say, with this person being out, we really don't have anyone who's thoroughly knowledgeable about that process. So we're really looking forward to working with Woodhill to get everything documented, not only streamlined like they have been doing, but documented. So in case of a, an emergency or somebody leaving for another job, we won't be left in a lurch, and we'll be able to continue with our billing functions. So that's what I have right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Steve? Clerk Flintoff?
Yes. Steve, could you describe a little bit about the regular maintenance of the water and sewer lines, kind of what that looks like for your team?
Sure. So, so we have a few water booster stations and pump stations, and we go through those on a regular basis, getting readings and making sure they're operating correctly. We also have a SCADA system that, that gives us continuous readouts on those operations. Like I say, we're doing the, the fire hydrant winterizing. We also do line flushing. And we, we are developing, we do somewhat, but we're developing a valve turning program to ensure that. to ensure that the various valves that we have throughout the system, we're able to close them in case of an emergency such as a water main break. So we're, you know, we're building up that, but it's going to take a while to get really, really up to snuff. As the valves sit unoperated for a period of time, they're either very difficult to move, or they'll move, but they're really extremely difficult to close. So we want to make sure that we pinpoint the critical valves, and we're operating those on a regular basis.
Oh, trustee Corteau.
Thank you. I wonder if you could tell us a little bit about that lead and copper testing? I don't know if maybe the results aren't made public, but if there's anything that you found concerning, or if you just don't even know yet?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to. So we test 20 residences a year, and we pick the, the state ensures that you choose the most likely lines to have lead. So we concentrate on Lubella, Myrtle, and Burton areas, older homes in the system, and also along Park Road. And we, we had 21 samples, and what that involves is having the residents make sure that the, the water is stagnant in their, their lines for at least six hours, so they don't let it sit overnight. And then the first water coming out of the tap, they fill a liter's sample bottle with. And then we send that to the state to be analyzed for lead and copper. What we do that is they want to get the worst-case scenario of water fitting in your fixtures to see if there's any corrosion of the system, because, you know, obviously, the fresh water and the water in our mains just ain't lead. We want to make sure that nothing is leaching out of the system. So we had 21, 21 samples. One of the samples showed positive for lead at 0.01 milligram per liter, which is the level of detection. All the 20 other ones were non-detect. 18 of the samples were non-detect for copper, and three of them ranged from 0.6 to 0.8 milligrams per liter, and 1.3 milligrams per liter is allowable for copper. So overall, very good. One house that did have a positive hit for lead, we're going to resample. The plan is to resample both the same bathroom tap and the kitchen tap, then allow the water to run for a couple minutes and get another sample. And we'll send those into the state, and all residents have been notified of the results.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Sure.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
That brings us to approval of the minutes. We have nine sets of minutes.
I'm going to take each one.
Well, I don't know. Do we, do we want to take each one of the sets of minutes in order?
I would suggest in order, or even in order page by page sometimes works well. I think we're back to August 17th. And I have my red pencil, so if anybody has extensive amendments, you know, I would appreciate them written, but other than that, we'll, we'll do it by hand.
So we have in front of us the minutes from August 17th, 2021. I know that there were some comments in the past about this particular set of minutes. Has this been, has this set of minutes been modified since the last time that it was submitted to the board?
No, and it wouldn't be. The, the minutes are, the draft minutes are submitted as is, so even, you know, some, if there's a mistake, it'll appear there, and then we correct it here.
Well, I know that there were some specific comments from members of the board of trustees with regard to minutes in, the set of minutes in particular in the past. So are you, what you're saying is that in order for you to make changes to the minutes, we have to go through page by page? Or we can, we can't ask for, as, as was done in the, in the past, ask for modifications based on sort of guidelines, sort of a request for changes to the minutes overall?
It would depend on what those are. I would say what Jack used to do, which worked rather nicely, was to just take each, each, for example, say, minutes of, draft minutes of August 17th, page one, and then if anybody had any changes, and then page two, any changes on through. Again, I haven't yet, I have, I have heard the, the criticism, and until the board makes amendments to these draft minutes, they don't change. So it's a, it's a process thing, and Jackie, I know you had a lot of criticism, and I, and I, I hear it. These don't change. There isn't a second draft of minutes that comes before the board. There's the draft minutes, and then there are the amended minutes. So that's the process. So I, I would suggest we take it page by page, and again, if anybody has any changes to propose to, to do those here in this meeting.
My, excuse me, I'll just comment, then I'll call on you trustee Noel. My understanding from conversations prior to this meeting, based on the earlier comments from members of the board of trustees, was that people were, members of the board of trustees were expecting that the minutes would come back reflecting those changes. And so what you're saying is that that is not possible, that's not how it works.
Correct. That's not how it works. There are draft minutes that are presented, and I tried to make this clear last time. I think it, it was when you were yelling at me to call the roll. And the point I was trying to make was, I was trying to be very clear to my colleagues that that is the process. I know Jackie said she was going to talk to the township attorney. I don't know if you did that, but, you know, D-Way, public bodies work, is there our, our draft minutes. And Jackie, I did hear your criticism. I, I can't operationalize it unless there's a, I, some, some amendments made. So, you know, for example, the call to order, roll call, we could just take it section by section, but if there are changes to be made, we make those amendments, and then those amendments are reflected and blacklined for the final minutes.
Trustee Noel, I know you had your hand raised. Is it all right if I, if I ask trustee Corteau to respond to the, the comment from the clerk first?
So I, my concern is that, that the changes needed are really quite extensive, I think, and more than can be accomplished in line by line. I did talk with attorney Fink. He, he did note that, you know, if the minutes aren't changed, the board does not have to approve minutes that are not believed to be complete, accurate, and correct. And so my concern is if all of the board has to spend a lot of time on line-by-line corrections, that, that's really a huge time sink, given that we've identified some systemic issues that I think need to be addressed. So I'm not sure how to go forward, other than to say, maybe minutes don't get approved, or maybe we think about whether another process can be used to work together on revisions.
Trustee Noel.
Okay, I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that under the Open Meetings Act in MCL 15.269, dealing with minutes, section, paragraph one, "The public body shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer." So it is now our responsibility as a board to go through and make any corrections that people want to make. This was mentioned by one of our residents, I believe, at the last meeting or the meeting before that. So what's happening is, this is no longer Jessica's responsibility. It is our responsibility as a board, and delaying days for so long makes it harder because it is going to take a long time. But that's our responsibility now to go through them.
I think, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't, I thought you were finished.
I did not have issues. I, I do not see any systemic issues with these minutes. There are some minor changes that could be made, but I think in general, these minutes are excellent. And I, I don't quite know what's going on with this board, but let's get down to it then, and go through and revise these meeting by meeting.
So I, what I was going to say, trustee Noel, is I think your interpretation of the meaning of that, what, what you just cited, is open to a different interpretation, and that is that, yes, the, the body as a whole has a responsibility, but it is the clerk's responsibility to present the minutes in a form that can be approved. And the message that, my, my sense is, the message that the majority of the board of trustees has been trying to convey is that we do not feel that the minutes as presented are in that form. And I think in the past, trustee Corteau has tried very hard to present some specific direction about what kinds of changes, not just, you know, line-by-line changes, but sort of, you know, in the nature of the, of minutes, you know, the way that they're constructed, the way that different people are represented. That kind of feedback was intended to elicit from the clerk minutes that the board could then approve. And so I, I think there is a difference of opinion about whether these minutes qualify as approvable minutes, and there was an effort to provide some direction, some guidance as to what the board is looking for. And we seem to be at sort of a standoff if the response of the clerk is that this is what you get, and if you want to change it, you have to change it yourself.
Well, can I respond?
Well, I think I saw trustee Jerome's hand, but maybe I was wrong. Yeah.
Well, you responded to me, and I want to respond to what you just said.
Well, can, but I saw trustee Jerome's hand raised prior to your raising your hand, is what I'm saying, and so I wanted to call on him, and then if you would like to comment again, you, you may.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
I just wanted to say, and I apologize, I'm having back issues. I, I will point out that the, and I, and I agree that there's, that we need to approve these minutes. I don't feel we have the representation here this evening to do so. I don't think that some of the comments that trustee Corteau has indicated, it is my understanding that in council with our attorney, that we're not obligated in, in this format to necessarily approve them. I do, it is our obligation to approve minutes for the meeting. I will also point out that we were months in arrears prior to taking office for many more than nine meeting minutes. And so I think it's imperative for us to take the time, and, you know, I, I do think that we, we must figure out a way to, to get past this sort of block, but we, we do need to get these minutes approved, and we need to get them approved in a format in which all of the trustees are comfortable in the inclusion of particular items and, and issues that have been identified in a number of correspondence to, to the board as a whole.
Trustee Noel.
Okay, I want to reiterate what I said before because I, I'm sensing that you're not hearing me. MCL 15.269 states that "The public body shall," I repeat, "shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer." We have a responsibility here at the next meeting to make any changes that we, as a board, want to make in the minutes. It's not open to interpretation. It says "shall."
Are there other comments? Clerk Flintoff.
Thank you. I don't, you know, I would appreciate it when my colleagues get legal advice or talk about the form of the minutes or something, to at least do me the courtesy of, of providing the citation, but, but I am doing my job. I am doing it faithfully, and I will just say it, it is this board's responsibility. We can start today, page one, draft minutes, August 17th, and start editing, just like we always have, just like every normal public body has done for as long as democracy has been working this way. Now, Jackie, the draft minutes, there are not a second draft of the draft, draft minutes, and, and I heard some of your feedback, and so I hope that the October 12th minutes show more of those, but I can't go back in time. And, you know, I, I really would ask for my colleagues to point to, I don't know if it's page one of August 17th, page two, but, but where the editing would start, because when you all talk about taking the time, you, you could also, you know, if you take the time and want to make some amendments, but literally, they have to be amendments. So however it is that we get there, we get there. Somebody wants to meet with me one-on-one, and we can go through and make some amendments to these, but giving general direction about a document that's already been produced does not change that document. So it's just a, a bit of a conundrum. I, I feel the board seeking a different path forward, and our path forward is to amend these draft minutes, however they need to be amended. however they need to be amended extensively or not, and approve them.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Clerk Flintoff, you feel that the input that you received, sort of guidance from Trustee Courtois on sort of what we're looking for from the minutes was reflected in the minutes of the October 12th meeting? But not the ones prior to that?
Well, I can't remember if that was the one after, whatever the minutes were after the one where you provided extensive input. But, so I'd have to go back to check if that was October 12th or not. But we could also start at the end if that would be better. But seriously, everybody, like, look, anything I have done wrong gets blacklined in these minutes. Okay, so let's just get moving. I mean, if there is a misspelling, we get to publicly correct it. I think it was, what was it? The September 14th one where accidentally had that yellow highlighting in there? I put that in the cover sheet. Yeah, September 14th. After posting the draft minutes, the clerk realized an error in G4 reports. She will bring proposed amendments to the board. I mean, there isn't much more of a transparent process than this. And I, we got to move forward, so.
I agree that we need to move forward. I think everyone wants to find a way to have minutes that we feel that we can approve. I'm just thinking.
Well, change them so that you feel that way.
Yes, wait just a second. I'm still speaking. That I think what we're trying to accomplish here is, I sort of, first of all, to understand what it is that's sort of preventing the minutes from coming to us in the form that we've tried to communicate, we're looking for. I sense that part of it is that you feel that once you've produced draft minutes, they're sort of set and that they have to be dealt with as that draft was presented, as opposed to take it back and then returned with the kind of general corrections. But that you have tried to incorporate what you've heard from Trustee Courtois, for example, into the minutes sort of going forward. And those would include October 12th, possibly earlier sets of minutes. And I guess what I would suggest is now that we know that, now that we understand that, that we look at the minutes sort of from whatever date it is that you feel that you've sort of tried to comply with what guidance was going forward, and that we figure out some kind of plan for remedying the ones prior to that. Because I think those really require a more significant overhaul than simply going through and going line by line. I guess what I would suggest is maybe there is a need for some kind of a plan for those that involves, you know, the support staff that are helping with the transcription. Because that's part of what I believe the guidance was, is that there's sections of transcribed comments that are missing from the minutes.
Where? Let's start talking about them.
Well, we've talked about them.
Never in detail.
Well, you've gotten examples from
I don't need examples.
and you've gotten examples, I believe, from Trustee Vogel at an earlier meeting.
This is a record that needs to be amended. Okay, so looking at August 17th, draft minutes, page one, call to order, roll call, adoption of the agenda. Does anyone see any, have any amendments to those?
No, I don't.
Order to get the material that's missing incorporated. Trustee Courtois.
I would like to move to table the minutes so that we can work on a better solution than spending the next three hours going through line by line.
I just want to, I wanted to say something before that. We keep delaying it, and that makes our task all the more difficult when we eventually do what we're required to do as a board. So.
I appreciate that. I would second the motion by Trustee Courtois. Is there further discussion of the motion? Clerk Flintoff.
Sure, I think it is magical thinking that there is another plan possible. I am the elected clerk. I'm drafting the minutes. Jackie, I welcome more of your feedback as you, you know, look at it. Like, the last meeting was particularly kind of a complicated one. So if you have specific feedback about what is on this paper, that would be great. But y'all, this is nuts. I mean, really, really, really. There is no plan. There is no staff support. There is no transcription that stops us from having to sit here and discuss what your objections are and changes are to these. I mean, you're making it, you know, you can throw around true and complete or whatever your, you know, contract law language is as many times as you want. But this is our job to approve our minutes. So I told you in our discussion of rules of order, and we need to have our follow up discussion. But I told you all that when a couple of people asked that I eliminate public comment from the minutes, that I was not willing to do that. And that was in light of what went down with the June 22nd meeting minutes. I haven't gotten any feedback from the public, one or two small things about not having it accurately represented. And I'm just asking you all to be brave enough to provide the specific criticism line by line. Please be brave enough to provide that criticism line by line on these minutes. Because this is the only way it's going to get done. So you can keep tabling and tabling and tabling. But one day or another, we're going to be sitting here together amending minutes.
Further comments? Please call, oh, another comment from Trustee Noel.
Okay, what's the motion? The motion is to table, that's on the table right now?
The motion is to table.
Can I, to table the minutes of the special meeting of August 17th, the regular meeting of August 24th, the regular meeting of September 14th, the special meeting of September 21st, the special meeting of September 22nd, special meeting of September 23rd, special meeting of September 27th, regular meeting of September 28th, and regular meeting of October 12th.
That's the motion. And it is a tabling motion. Are there further comments? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? No. Courtois?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
That brings us to public comment. This is a time for member of the public to speak for up to three minutes in any manner under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Jerome will be keeping time. Are there any members of the public participating remotely who would like to participate at this time in public comment?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. We're all out of in-person participants. First up is David Reed, followed by Pam Boyd. David?
David Reed, South Township. You folks have made a real mess for yourselves. You've got, what is it, nine sets of minutes now to correct? Trustee Courtois, the clerk cannot read your mind. She cannot make up entries for the minutes. She cannot go back and change things and make them clear so that you can understand them without going through the minutes, line by line, and saying, this sentence needs to be changed. We need to add this here. We need to change this here. You cannot just say, please make them clearer for me because I don't understand them. What you're expecting the clerk to do, she cannot do. You must go through the minutes, line by line, item by item, and correct them at the next minute, at the next meeting. You've got now eight or nine, or I don't know how many, sets of minutes to correct, and memory is now lost. This is probably why you actually need to use an AI, artificial intelligence system to transcribe the meeting from verbal to written. And then there's no question. But until you get these things, till you go through these things line by line, you're going to be getting the same set of minutes every, every, every meeting. You're going to get the same set of August 17th minutes, the same set of September minutes, same set of October minutes. You're, you guys are making fools of yourselves to keep tabling these things. You're making a real, and you're out of, out of, you're breaking, basically breaking the OMA. You've got to pass these minutes, and you can't expect a clerk to read your mind. So you must go through these things and change them line by line, minute by minute, meeting by meeting.
Thank you, David. Next up is Pam Boyd, followed by Rob Pattinson. Pam?
Pam Boyd, a Siouxsia resident who's very embarrassed tonight by this decision. I mean, half, if you had spent half of the time that you did arguing, you could have gotten through many of those documents. And even if you didn't finish all of them, you could have at least gotten through a couple. The fact that you can't simply go through the minutes, a very simple procedure, makes some of you look like you're afraid to do your job. I'm embarrassed for you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is, I'm sorry, my eyes jumped around. Next up is Pat Stein, followed by Kathleen Brand. Pat Stein. I'm sorry, next up is Pat Stein.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, quietly, but we can hear you.
Okay, well, I will speak up because I really want to be heard. Supervisor Hathaway, this is so typical of you. You take things that are usually at the beginning of the agenda, you bump them to the end, and it usually ends up being a dumping ground onto Jessica. Truly. And Courtois, I'm sorry, trustee Jackie Courtois, you know what I see? I see somebody that's being given a script, week after week, being told, now Jackie, I want you to table the minutes and not go through any action to approve them. I am not a board member. I am not a trustee. I am a resident. And I have attended enough meetings to know the process. How long have you folks been a new board? And why can't you get it right? The way I look at it is just one more issue, one more scheme to make clerk Jessica Flintoff look like she doesn't know what she's doing. And the truth of the matter is, Will, you don't know what you're doing. Jackie, you don't know what you're doing. And Jane Vogel sure as hell doesn't know what she's doing. Get it together, folks.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Kathleen Brand. Kathleen?
I want to say.
I'm sorry, Kathleen, we can't hear you. Kathleen? Kathleen will come, Kathleen?
I'm commuted.
Here you are, Kathleen. Yes, please begin. Kathleen, we can't hear you. Kathleen, we're going to come back to you. Kathleen, we're going to come back to you. It's okay. Kathleen, we'll come back to you. Next up is Caroline Altomar, followed by Harvey Summers. Caroline?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi Caroline.
Honestly, the Board of Trustees, Will and Jackie, I am absolutely astounded. I'm absolutely, like, beyond words that, that this whole tabling of the minutes for one more cycle of the Board of Trustees meetings is just unbelievable. And that you cannot specifically just go through line by line. What the previous caller said, if you had just spent time just going through it, you could have, like, nicked off two of the meetings in the time that it took you to argue about whether or not, and whether or not, and whether or not. I mean, it is, it's embarrassing, it's stupid. Come on, you guys, it's just like beyond. And I also want to say, Mr. Hathaway, I was sitting in the Township Hall while the public comment was going. And for the most part, you were writing notes and not looking like you were listening at all. Yes, you may have been listening, I will grant you that. But you were not looking like you were giving it your attention in any way, shape, or form. And I am very disappointed in your behavior reaction to the public comments that were coming in over Zoom. I just think it just underscores what I said in person, that I don't feel that you take public comments very seriously. And I'm seriously disappointed. It just, it's scandalous. This board is a scandal. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Next up is Harvey Summers, followed by Rob Pattinson. Harvey?
Still at 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. And as the former Secretary of Legal Women Voters of Ann Arbor, I know that the supervisor and trustee Courtois are just totally wrong. But let me switch subjects for just a moment to your Fall Newsletter, page seven. Many of you who regularly travel through the Liberty and Wagner Road intersection may have been surprised to see this huge billboard built on the corner. How did that possibly happen? And I read, if the application meets all current standards of the zoning ordinance, the zoning official must approve the zoning compliance application. Well, I say, are you satisfied with one person's right to put up this amazingly dangerous billboard on the corner of a very busy intersection? Are you satisfied? Have you done anything? Have you considered changing the zoning rules to preclude highway-sized billboards being put on the side of residential roads or semi-local roads? Are there new, are there any new applications pending? And have you actually noticed that this still unused new construction billboard, one side faces north, but there were trees blocking cars traveling south on Wagner from seeing that side of the billboard? When it eventually gets turned on, they cut down the trees. Are you aware of that? Have you done anything about that? I'm just saying, that's just such an astonishing issue. Have you done anything about it? Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Gillian Carey. Rob?
Thank you. I would request five minutes because my public comment represents a benefit to the larger community. Two weeks ago, Representative Lizinski announced $750,000 of state money to put towards creating a safe pedestrian crossing over I-94 along the Zeb Road Bridge. I believe it is the perfect time to finally build a true gateway to Siouxsia Township and make a community center a big part of that idea. When our family moved here in 1976, it was a play desert in terms of facilities within walking or biking distance for kids to play and for families to have activities. In the following 45 years, that has not changed. There are no facilities for families within a mile or two of Zeb Road and 94. In recent years, the Park Zeb In recent years, the Park Zee subdivisions have added 750 new homes in that small area alone. There are at least 2,000 homes within a mile of Zee and 94. I would guess there are 10 times as many families living in the area now as there were in 1976. And as I said, there is still no place to play or enjoy family activities. This is the perfect opportunity to use the Buy, Protect, Sell program to procure the 300 North Zee property for the benefit of all in Syo Township. The property at 300 North Zee has been left in blight by the current owner, Mav D., for 10 years. In 2005, it sold for 8.5 million. In 2009, it sold for 4.58 million. In 2012, it sold for 1.36 million to Mav D. I believe this is the perfect place to showcase the benefits of living in Syo Township. I would suggest approaching the owner, Michael A. Blasick, to see if he is willing to donate the property. He has chosen not to develop for 10 years. And I would also suggest naming the project the Michael A. Blasick Welcome Center to Syo Township to encourage that donation. Granted, this is going to be an uphill effort to make this happen. In my research, Mav D. seems to intend to make tens of millions of dollars from this property with what I call the shoehorn project because they want to shoehorn as much stuff into these 29 acres as they can. They appear to have installed their employee, Jeff Harshy, on the DDA to make sure that happens. The Washtenaw County Road Commission will not allow the project to go forward until the increased traffic of the shoehorn project addresses the traffic impact of 484 residential units, a four-story hotel, a strip mall, and restaurants will have on the Zee-94 interchange. That is expected to cost $5 to $6 million, and thus the recent push by Jeff Harshy during the July 12th DDA meeting to get the township to pay for the North Zee Boulevard project. We recently heard a sewer and water presentation from OHM that the sewer system is slowly approaching capacity. It's likely this project would push the system past capacity and force the township to upgrade since 300 North Zee is in the DDA and therefore part of the sewer and water system. That will cost additional millions to the township. Even if Mav D. decides not to donate the property and is willing to sell it for what they paid for it, 1.36 million, the township will be several million dollars ahead because a community center won't bring the same amount of traffic, and widening Zee won't be necessary, and the sewer system won't need millions in upgrades. The Zee Road pedestrian project will take a few years to complete, so will the community center. That's why now is the perfect time to get the LPC, the PNR, the DDA, the Planning Commission, the Board of Trustees thinking about the benefits this proposal could bring to Syo Township. As members of the Board of Trustees, I hope you join me in believing preserving the rural nature of Syo Township is more important than developing it to increase tax revenue. It seems to me Syo Township would be much more attractive if people exiting I-94 saw a warm, welcoming community center with childrens and families playing and learning rather than a shoehorn project that would be an eyesore. I believe we have an opportunity to create a true gateway to Syo Township if we have the courage to pursue it. I realize this is a big idea and will need a lot of work. Please feel free to contact me anytime. If you would like to see the property, I would invite you to come over, and you can park at our house, and we can walk over and see the potential of a Syo Township Community Center and Gateway Park. Thank you for your time and attention. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob. And I want to note, too, that Rob's proposal that he'd submitted in September is included in the correspondence file tonight. Next up is Gillian Carey.
Hey, Gillian Carey here, on Moella Avenue. Regarding these, the minutes, you know, in statute, there's very few rules regarding what needs to be included in the minutes. It states each meeting showing the date, time, place, members present, members absent, any decisions made at a meeting open to the public, and the purpose or purposes for which a closed session is held. The minutes shall include all roll call votes taken at the meeting. The public body shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer. The public body shall make corrected minutes available at or before the next subsequent meeting after correction. The corrected minutes shall show both the original entry and the correction. So right here, first of all, the public body shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer. So by not, by tabling these minutes, you're actually in violation of the Open Meetings Act. That's one thing. Another thing is, since it seems that Clerk Flintoff is being reprimanded for invisible rules that she doesn't know, it doesn't make sense. You were supposed to have rules of order meetings, which has been delayed over and over and over again. And then you point fingers at her for not doing her job. Clerk Flintoff, you may just want to include what is included in the Open Meetings Act, print off the transcript and tap, or staple it to the very few things that the Open Meetings Act recommends. This is absolutely ridiculous. So I would suggest that you hurry up and approve those minutes. Or there's violations here that could potentially be implemented. Any public official who intentionally violates a provision of this act for a second time within the same term shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be fined not more than $2,000 or imprisoned for not more than one year or both. A public official who intentionally violates this act is guilty of a misdemeanor, punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000. So do we really want to go there? Do your job, please. And stop trying to manipulate Clerk Flintoff into failure. It's only going to backfire on you.
Thank you, Gillian. Next up is Phillips Conope, followed by Kathleen Brand. Phillips Conope?
Hi, this is Leanne Phillips Conope, Sherwood Forest Court. I want to echo what so many people have said about the minutes and what an incredible waste of time that this has been. And scapegoating the clerk is only going to continue to get you into more and more trouble. You just have to do the work. The other thing that I want to say is to echo what Caroline Altomir stated, which is, I, I left my nine-year-old son's bedtime tonight to come down in person to give my comments because I was so outraged at the behavior of the supervisor and treasurer tonight. And while I was standing speaking for about the first 75% of my words, he shuffled his papers. Supervisor Hathaway, it is utterly disrespectful to look down at someone when they are looking you in the eye, face to face. And this is completely inappropriate for someone who claims to be concerned about resolving conflict and has put that on their job description. It is a fundamental premise of communication to give human beings the decency of looking at them in the eye and of, when you're listening on Zoom, to make it appear at least that you care. And it is just highly offensive. And so I, I needed to say that.
Thank you, Leanne. Next up is Kathleen Brand. Kathleen?
I hope you can hear me.
Yes, hi Kathleen.
Hi, Syo Township. I just wanted to thank a few members on this board for motivating me to learn statutes, to read common law, to read the Attorney General's Handbook from the Open Meetings Act. You make us so knowledgeable that we know when you are breaking the law. So I just want to point out a fact. There's a fact that for any panel that trustee Carteau is on, she never asks for the same standards of record-keeping for meetings. If you look at those meetings, it just says date, time, place, somebody discussed. Isn't it amazing that she's not asking for the exact same standards that she's asking here? And it's clear to me and the rest of us in the audience that it was clear what you needed to do. You needed to make the corrections right away, but pretend you don't know what is being said. So neither on the Planning Commission, on the Land Preservation Commission, I'm also extending this to trustee Jerome, neither of you has asked for any comparable changes in meeting minutes for those panels. Trustee Carteau, you are willfully breaking the Open Meetings Act. I do not know what you spoke to Jim Fink about. I am distrustful for the feedback that he was, that he gave. I really don't think the attorney is telling you to break the Open Meetings Act. This is dangerous territory. I think you should think about stopping doing, to stop doing that.
Thank you, Kathleen. And I just want to note, too, Jim Fink is not in attendance tonight. Cas, apology. You have your hand up? Apology.
Yeah, so I guess I thought that public comment is included in the minutes. Is that not true, or?
I do include it. It's not, it's not by law included in the, by law. A clerk or secretary of a public body is not required to include public comment. I choose to include public comment in the draft minutes.
Well, I'm very happy that you choose to include it because I think it should be part of the record.
I do, too.
So thank you.
You're welcome. And I see no other Zoom hands. Will?
In that case, is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Jerome?
I'll support.
Support by Noel. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Carteau? Carteau?
Carteau, actually, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She sent a message saying that she has a fever.
Oh, okay, Carteau stepped out?
She had to drop off the meeting a few minutes ago.
Okay, was it during public comment?
It was during public comment.
That's fine, just so I have a note of when she left the meeting. Jerome?
Yes.
Rough crowd tonight. Noel?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. I hope everybody feels okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.